Mike.
Okay, thank you. I'm calling for the convening of our public session to the School Board of Education. Today is September the first, and it is 6:03 PM. Roll call, please.
Trustee Young.
Present.
Trustee Gardner.
Present.
Trustee Fox is absent. Vice President Gross.
Present.
President Uvalde.
I am present. May I be raised, please, for the pledge of allegiance?
And before we do, can I just make sure that we have a note on our minutes that trustee Fox was in attendance for the closed session items?
Absolutely, it is noted.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A report of action taken in the closed session. We had a conference with labor negotiation. Items were discussed, and there were no action taken. And on the closed session, item B, conference with real property negotiation. Such property was discussed, and there were no action taken. Thank you. Report of, let me see, roll call. Pledge, adoptions of the board agenda. Entertain a motion to effect, please.
I move to approve.
A second.
Thank you. Roll call, please, for the approval of the agenda.
Trustee Young. Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Vice President Gross.
Aye.
President Uvalde.
Aye. Are there any recognitions or presentations?
No, Dr. Uvalde, there are no recognitions or presentations for this evening.
Thank you so much. Are there reports of the district advisory committee?
There aren't, there are not at this time. I do believe we have a message from the Valeo School Manager Association to be read.
Thank you. Please do so at the moment.
Good evening. In concert with CSEA and VEA, VSMA site and district managers are working diligently to ensure that students and staff are safe, and teaching and learning is happening. In addition, we are conducting Williams visits, administering NWE, NWEA, and other baseline assessments, and implementing social emotional learning and MTSS practices. We are also regularly updating our COVID protocols and practices to ensure that we are in compliance with district and state guidelines. We are excited to be back and have definitely hit the ground running. As always, continue to stay healthy and safe. This is Kimberly Mitchell Lewis, president of VSMA. And that's the end of those comments.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Are there any community comments? Ms. Thomas?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, item seven, our consent items. That's before us. What is your pleasure?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. A second.
Okay, so we move approved that we adopt consent item A through N. Roll call, please.
Trustee Young. Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Vice President Rose.
Aye.
And trustee, I'm sorry, vice and president Uvalde.
Aye. Okay, since now we're on item eight, and there are no action items, if I'm correct. Okay, let's move on to nine, information item study, and this is nine A, strategic planning process update. Mr. Superintendent Spalding, please.
Thank you, Dr. Uvalde. I bring to the board tonight by way really of orientation, kind of where we are in our strategic planning process. And I have been tasked by our strategic planning facilitators, Abby Benedetto and Shane Sevier, with some homework, and some homework that they have for the board. And I think you've probably heard from Ken that there will be some meetings that are coming up, that they will be scheduling with board members to get your input on some specific items and some questions that they have set forth. But they've also tasked me with working with you on kind of preparing the ground for the work that will come as we work with our strategic planning advisory group, or SPAC. They've called it a lot, in the work that they did in Hayward, it was called the DAC, because that's the District Advisory Committee, but I explained to them that DAC has a specific connotation in our district and in most districts as a parent group that oversees Title I, Title II, Title III funding. And so I didn't want to get those, I didn't want to get those acronyms mixed up. So we renamed our group the SPAC, and we will be assembling that shortly. So I'm going to show you just kind of some items that I have for you, and I will be sending these to you as a PDF, but I wanted to present tonight. And hopefully, presenting is always a challenge on Google Meet, so let's see how it goes. Let's see. Hold up the window. And I'm hoping you can see this. So this, can everyone see this?
Yes, not all the space.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to move it around so you can, so I can focus in Pressey's style. So when you approved the contract with Sevier and Associates a few weeks ago, this was the original scope of work and the original timeline. And it had a few things that were going on in August. August, as you know, is behind us. Some DAC meetings, well, SPAC really for us, in September, October, November, and December, and then really trying to work towards a finalized strategic plan in 2022. But to quote the very famous Beatle, the late great John Lennon, "Life is what happens to you when you're busy making other plans." And so I think we've had some delays in some of what we're trying to do because of the opening that we've had and with COVID. But we still feel like we're on track. I met with our two facilitators just last week, and we're making some adjustments. And I think we're still going to be, you know, pretty much on target and on time. But we're just going to be making some adjustments as to when we'll be convening SPAC. And so what we're looking at doing, we're looking at basically four phases that we would be doing. It says two meetings in September, but really we would be doing one meeting with our SPAC committee in September, two in October, and a meeting in November. And the SPAC is the group of 25 to 40 people who are brought together to bring in, you know, to really gather information, to gather experiences, and really testimony from families and community members and community leaders and whatnot as to, you know, what the experience is like with our district and how we can go after some big items, some big goals that we have. And really, they put together or help put together the strategic plan. They're also the ambassadors of this process. So they would be going out to folks that they know. They would be reaching out and getting additional information. And I think you've heard them, our facilitators, describe this as street data. Street data is when you're going out and you're hearing from folks, and you're hearing what people's experiences are. And you're asking folks, you know, what are they experiencing in our schools, with our schools? And then you use a different form of data that we're used to. They call that satellite data. And that's the stuff we normally point to in terms of attendance rates and suspension rates and graduation rates and test scores and all that kind of stuff. But what they try to do, as you know, is combine that stuff and not be so reliant on just the satellite data, but really have a 360-degree kind of view of what's happening. So I think that you have all been scheduled or should have been scheduled with some time coming up in the next couple of weeks with our facilitators. And then there's some things we're going to ask of you in the meantime. And this is the homework that they've given me. Can you see it? Basically, what they've asked me to give you for homework, and I don't know that we really need to workshop it today or tonight, but I'll be sending out this information in the next few days and collecting some of this and probably bring it back to the meeting on the 15th to kind of process it a little bit. So they've asked for three things from us. One is that you consider the pillars or major themes, areas, or goals that the board desires to drive the strategic plan. And what I'm going to do with you first is actually go out and solicit that from you individually and get get information that you would send, because I think there's going to be a lot that comes in that the board has identified in common. For example, I know that the board has gone through, you know, training with the county in equity and has expressed a deep desire to really pursue equity in a really meaningful way in the district. And so I would not be surprised to see equity emerge as one of the four major areas, or five. They say, you know, they recommend four to five areas. You know, if you get beyond that, then it gets a little bit unwieldy, but some focus areas. And I wouldn't be surprised to see that become one of it. So these are the kinds of things they're looking for the board to start to define. And so that when we do start to meet with the SPAC, the SPAC's job is to really kind of bring information and start to populate what action steps would be in place, what those objectives and tasks would be in pursuit of the larger goals that the board has. I'll show you some examples of pillars. So this is, I think, maybe the best example, certainly the one that caught our eye here when we were looking for a strategic planning provider. These are the four major areas, and these are the pillars that Hayward Unified School District captured. And so they came into the process with their SPAC really with four major areas they wanted to tackle as a board. But having the SPAC help to populate what the goals, I'm sorry, what the objectives would be, what the tasks would be, you know, what the details would be. So they talked about deeper learning, for example, increasing opportunities for students, particularly under serve students to think critically and master academic content by engaging them in ways that are culturally and linguistically responsive. That's one. That's one pillar. Another one is relationship-centered schools. Increase student access to social emotional supports with a focus on equity. Another area that they captured, something like this is what we want to be all about, is service excellence. Provide positive experiences at our sites for our diverse community. And then the fourth area that they selected was operational sustainability. Implement facilities, safety, and technology plans that are equitable and sustainable. Now, I'm not saying that that's what we would adopt, because we have to make it our own in Valeo, but it kind of gives you a sense of what those major areas are and how you might craft those major areas. We have some exist, I don't know if I called them pillars, but we have three large goals, as you are aware, that we've had for a number of years that might be included, you know, or not. It depends. But this is what's been driven or driving our LCAP, these three large goals. One is increasing parent and community engagement. Goal two is and has been for quite some time, creating safe, supportive, and engaging learning environment for all staff and students. And goal three has been increasing number of students graduating with A through G requirements met. Now, again, I'm not proposing that those be the strategic plan tenants, that they be the pillars. But I'm just, I'm giving you a couple of examples that when they're starting this process with the board, they're starting with some big things. And then when you get to the actual strategic planning, you're actually breaking these big things into chunks, and you're breaking them into outcomes and actions. And that's what your work becomes for the next three to five years. So that's kind of what I wanted to give you to be thinking about. And I'll be sending out some information to you on, you know, how you might respond and give us some of your ideas. And then we could bring that back to the next meeting to discuss in more detail. Does that make sense? Okay. So that's homework assignment number one. Oh, Dr. Young, I see you.
My question is, that, we received an email from Abby, and she gave us homework also for our meeting individually or together. So is this an addition?
Yes, they give a lot of homework. But I think the homework that she gave to you was one that she, I don't think they were looking for you to prepare something. I think they were looking for you to answer certain questions that they're going to interview you about. But I don't know that there's a lot of preparation that goes. I think it was more that they just want to kind of get a snapshot from you on just some thoughts you had on those questions. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, well, her questions are necessary, it is necessary to prep for, you know, if you want to give the real deal. But, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, you know what I'm saying. I mean, you would do some prep, but it's not like deep research. I think it's really more kind of like thinking through, you know, your experiences in the district and, you know, what you can relate to tell kind of a background story. I think that's kind of what they're after. So the second, so the second, so the second item was that, so you'll recall that this SPAC group is anywhere between 25 and 40 people. And we've talked about 40 being kind of at the high end of manageable. I've shared with them, and I thought maybe we need to think closer to 25. And the reason being that not really kind of knowing where we're going to be in a month or two months in terms of our ability to have large group gatherings, you know, we're not doing a lot of that now. Certainly not doing it at our school sites. That I think that we're really probably going to be seeing, having to do some or much of this on Zoom. And so it gets pretty difficult when you have 40 little pictures on your computer screen to try to really get the best from everyone. So what I'm proposing is probably closer to 25 than 40. But what they wanted to do is get from the board really some guidance for us to work with in terms of what you'd like to see the composition be. The percentage of students, percentage of teachers, parents, classified staff, administrative staff, community leaders, who are formal community leaders, community leaders, or informal community leaders, business leaders. And they're trying to kind of get what that balance would be. They're not necessarily looking for the names of people, but really what that composition ought to be. So that's one of the other items they were looking for. Now. Yeah, I'll finish, I'll finish just my last thought, and then to Dr. Young. Two spots are reserved on this SPAC to have board membership in each one of these meetings. We've talked about how every board member wants to participate, so we will rotate that, and we are able to do that. But the other members of the SPAC will be composed in a way that the board, you know, is looking for it to be composed. Dr. Young. You're muted. Dr. Young, I think you're muted.
I would like, addressing number two, in the formation of this particular advisory committee for this particular task. What is the criteria? Hopefully, the criteria is something that's dealing with dedication to this community, dedication to the students in the community, and a vision of what direction we should be going.
Yes. No, all those things, all those things. And people who are committed to being at each meeting and committed to leaving the meeting and doing their own homework in terms of outreach to other individuals. So it's not something you, it's not a town hall-ish thing. It's not something you show up for once and you throw out your ideas, and then you don't come back. And, you know, it's really going to have to be a level of dedication that people are all in to assist in this planning process. They're prepared to come to every one of these meetings. They're prepared to reach out themselves to other members, because you're, part of this process is the SPAC people really become almost ambassadors of the process. And their job is really to also gather other forms of information from other people. So it's not a passive process at all.
Trustee Gardner, excuse me.
I think, in all fairness, this is just all my own opinion. I also would feel that it would have to be that they are part of this community that live here. Their kids go to school here when selecting, or they had kids to go to school here, or they have gone to school in this community.
I think that's fair. And I think when you look at kind of how we're listing the people, I think it mostly assumes, although it might be a little bit different for people who are employees, may or may not, you know, be in the community. But I think, I think you'll see that the vast majority, if you look at that list of people, are people from within the community that we're looking to give information to us on the SPAC.
Are you through, Dr. Young?
Yes, I am.
Okay, trustee Chris Gardner, please.
I know that you don't necessarily want our recommendations for these individuals, just kind of a broad scope. But how are we going to recruit for these individuals? Are we putting an ad in the paper? Are we posting it on our website? Or how are we going to get people to sign on?
I think we may want to do some selection, just because of the timing. And not everybody responds to the paper, but we may get some suggestions, you know, go out for some suggestions. But what they're looking to do is really try to focus more on the composition than on the actual personalities.
I guess my question really is, who's going to make the suggestions? I mean, who are the people that are going to?
I would probably be reaching out to staff and probably also, you know, getting information from you.
Because I really think that we need to also include those people that have not necessarily had a very good experience with the district, but would like to see things change and want to feel as if they can provide input in order for that to happen.
And that's a big part of what, you know, what they go after in this particular process. And you'll see in their documentation, they talk about really hearing the marginalized voices. And, you know, this is all about, this isn't just getting the, you know, this isn't just going after kind of the normal, you know, we're not just reaching out to the PTA here. We're trying to get beyond that, not that there's anything wrong with PTA, but trying to get to really authentic voices that are out there in the community. So I will probably need some of your help as we're selecting people.
Are you through, Dr. Gardner?
Yes, thank you for the elevation of my voice.
Dr. Young, sorry.
I hope, hopefully, in this election, that this advisory committee will be a reflection of the diversity that we already have in our district and the diversity that we serve. So I'm going to look at that very carefully.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Gross.
No, no, I just wanted to kind of echo the concerns of Dr. Gardner and Dr. Young. And, you know, I don't want this, everybody elevated, but me, gee, with, I don't want this to become district-laden. You know, and we see that a lot. It's real convenient, okay? I think what, she's going to be Dr. Gardner from now on. What Christie is saying is extremely accurate in the whole philosophy behind this, because we need to get not educators, but people who are strong in educating this community. Now, it's, sorry to say, it should be the same thing, but it really isn't. But we need, that's what I feel, that's what I'm looking for. That's what I'm looking for. And, you know, I think the number of 25, based on Ron and everything else, is really a good number, because I can't look at 40 people on the screen either. But, you know, I think it's representation on this is critical to the product and the progress it's going to make. So, you know, like I said, I just want to echo what Dr. Gardner and Dr. Young were saying about the composition of the staffing. And as a board, I'm going on a limb to say that we would be more than happy to assist you and can do it in a very efficient way to come up with those names to put in there so they represent a cross-section of who lives in the city of 120,000 people.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gross.
Thank you.
You know, you know. Let me follow, let me follow if I may.
Okay.
Okay, the same thing. I echoed everyone's comments in regards to, I wrote it down, it's people who think differently. And we need that opportunity, and we can't be all following the same line. And also the diversity that Dr. Young spoke of. Those are the two things that are very, very important. Now, I need some clarification on community leaders, informal versus formal. And then how, why is business leaders separated or different? And let me see, do we have, does that mean we need to put or include labor also?
That, those are great questions, Dr. Uvalde. I was trying to think of all the potential categories, and I've probably run out, you know, there are probably some additional ones that you can think of. When I was thinking about community leaders, there are people in this community, as you're aware, who may not have an official title, but lead a particular organization or a particular project or nonprofit or whatever that ought to be, you know, included. So the question is, like, you know, kind of to what extent? And then the formal community leaders, there are people who are in elected positions, who, you know, or appointed positions, who you may or may not want to have involved. So I know that, you know, they talked about their experience in Hayward. You know, there were community leaders who were representative of particular groups or nonprofits or projects or whatever. But they also identified, I think, you know, a mayor, a city manager, police chief. You know what I mean? So that's kind of the delineation that I put out there in terms of formal and informal. But we know that there's a lot of leadership out there that doesn't carry a title or doesn't belong to, you know, a governmental agency that are very influential, people with really important things to contribute. And business leaders, you know, are out there, but labor leaders as well, Dr. Uvalde, that could also be, you know, maybe they become the informal community leaders. I don't know. But I just tried to kind of think about all the categories, and there are many, probably more. But all the categories that you might want to think about, including, you know, and then, you know, trying to get up to 25.
Thank you. Dr. Young? You're muted again.
Oh, I take back my three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Proceed, Superintendent.
So the last thing they were asking is for us to consider, one of the things they do in this process is they consult an elder. And that is that, you know, they feel like it's really important, and they've had good success with this, that there are people out there who've been around for a long, long, some of them might actually be on this board. People have been around for a long, long time, who have seen a lot of things happen, whose voice, you know, who have had a connection into the schools and connection in the community, whose voice had been really, really important and helpful to hear from. So that was another item, considering an elder or elders, I don't think that more than probably one or two, but someone who could also be included in this process to speak to, you know, really the kind of the history of our schools, our district, and our community, and things that they would have the wisdom to kind of weigh in. And things that they would have the wisdom to kind of weigh in with. So they wanted us to consider that as well. So those are kind of the big three things that they're looking for us from homework. The other thing they said is they said, you know, when I said, well, you know, there's, this is, this is a little different the way we're going about it. And they said, trust the process, trust the process. So they just, they remind us to trust the process, that this is a process that's worked out really, really well, that we'll be, we'll be glad when, when we're putting this thing together, that we did it this way.
Vice President Gross, you're next, sir.
Thank you. Superintendent Spalding, just real quick, quickly back to number three. Elder in the community able to speak to strategic planning. That, that would speak to a person who has educational, has an educational background and a lot of history, right?
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, it may, it, a lot of history, yes. Educational background, maybe, maybe not. Connectedness with, with our community and connectedness with the school experience in this district. You know, and, and credibility, strong credibility. I think those are really kind of the, the criteria that, when they talk about elder.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody who is well-regarded, well-respected. You know, and, and influential.
Dr. Young? You're muted, Dr. Young.
I can see that, okay, I can see elders in the community, but I see it diversified as elders in the community, elders in the educational community that way.
I, I don't think they're looking for that many elders.
It's just two. It's in the community.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's just two.
I thought maybe there were eight or something.
You can't, you might be able to get an elder that has the community. And I'm thinking about their experiences bringing kids up in this community through Belair Unified School District. That's what I'm thinking about. You know, if a mother was living, she could tell you a story. But I'm thinking about on that aspect. And then I'm thinking about the elders that have gone through the system in Belair Unified Schools. They have a story to tell you of how that went too. But that's two different entities. And you would get a broader spectrum of what actually transpired through the, through the transition. Just a thought.
No, I mean, we'll, we'll, I'll definitely be sending you, you know, some queries and, and taking in your, your responses.
Appreciate that.
Trusty Gardner, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm good. I think that, I mean, there's a, there are a number of people that I know that have expressed an interest in participating. So I, I think that it won't be that difficult to come up with 25 people. It's the commitment, you know, I think there's a lot of people that want to see change in this community and want to see change in the schools. And I think that we'll have a, I, I, I think that, I don't, I don't see that there will be an issue in, in getting the people that we need.
Okay, thank you. General Gardner. Anything else? I'm sorry, Kristi. I, I didn't want Tony to pick on you, Kristi. Superintendent, anything else, sir?
None. I think all very, very good questions from everyone. And, and I really, you know, I, I definitely feel the excitement and enthusiasm for this process and, and the, and the strong desire to get it right. And, and I think we'll, I think we'll be able to do a good job with it. And I think that your input is going to be key and you're the first ones they're going to hear from. So I think that's, and, and we've also talked, there will probably be sometimes, I might amend their contract and bring it back to you to provide a little more workshop time that you might have as a board with the facilitators. So look for, look for that as well.
Now, when we go finish, let me say, before we finish the process, who will act out on the report? The, the report for the, what happens to the report finally?
You'll, you'll, I mean, you'll have a draft, you know, you'll be able to see where it's going. So we'll keep you up to date on it. And then at the very end, you know, once, you know, once the draft has been finished and people have, you know, given their input and everything's there, the board ultimately approves the strategic plan. And then that becomes a guiding document for the next several years. And, and it'll, it'll be populated with actions, things that need to get done to meet these pillars. And, and that, that will, and then you bring that back in your board meetings. This item was on there, this item was on there, this item was on there. So it really has a powerful effect on, on the work of the board in the district.
I know there were concern about the, the numbers. But you know, before we had the beginning of the 20, year 2000, we had a 2020.
Vision 2020.
Vision 2020. And, and you know, you know how many, there were, of us, Superintendent Spalding.
2020?
There were about 200 of us.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
And, and let me tell you, and what that, it did not only accomplish an excellent product, but how it lifted up the morale of the community. And, and VCUSD was, was very responsible for that. Brought in the right people, and I don't know how they brought the right people in. And let me tell you, it was one of the most productive, successful, and many of those folks who were in that committee ended up becoming public officials because of what it did in our lives.
I remember that.
Just want to let you know that Vision 2020 was one of the most powerful things that I personally have experienced also. Thank you. And talking about elders, there were excellent elders there who were not into themselves and just wanted to do was just the very best for the community. And I remember them. Dr. Young, excuse me.
Neil, thank you also for, I see in, in number two, that you did meeting for rotating of the members. I really appreciate that because it's very important for us to feel accountable for this end product. And the input that we put into it, so we can make sure that it's maintained and watched. So thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you. Yes. I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's the board's strategic plan. So, so there will be opportunities, not just in those meetings, but others for the board to weigh in very strongly on this.
I will never forget the, the persona or the character or the presence of Mr. Welch, Superintendent Welch. How tall he walked when we went through that process. And very quiet. Think about it, he was so quiet. But it just turned out so beautifully and I, I'm just, I cannot help but think about the positive results of that. And Dr. Young, you still have your hands up? You still want the floor, Dr. Young? Okay, thank you. Are we ready to proceed with our reports?
As, as you wish, yes.
Okay, let me see. The first report is 10A. The superintendent. The water went down a drain.
I was gonna, I was gonna, I'd hand you a bottle of water if I could through the.
I did, I had the water, it went down a drain, sorry.
No worries. Well, I just, just some, some things I want to update you on. And there's some, you know, some items that you've been hearing from me about the last few weeks. You know, the first thing I want to say is that, and you kind of, you know, I want to kind of echo what you heard from Kimberly Mitchell Lewis with V S M A. And that is that, you know, overall, we, we've, we've had a very positive and welcoming opening, especially, you know, for the in-person instruction that we've been doing. And, you know, it's, it, it's a challenging time. It's not, it's, you know, it's not normal, as you know. We've tried to make it as normal as we can, but we have a lot of protocols in place. And, you know, we have students who are wearing masks and there's hygiene and there's, there's air filtration, ventilation. So there, there are a number of things that we're doing that are a little bit different and we're pretty vigilant about, you know, if, if somebody comes to school and is under the weather, you know, they go home. I mean, we're, we have to be, we have to be. We follow those C D P H guidelines. So it does make for a different experience. But as I've gotten around the classrooms and I've gotten around the schools and I talk to principals and I talk to teachers and I see kids, talk to them in the classroom or in the playground, people are really, really happy. And you can tell when somebody's smiling and if they're, even if they're wearing a mask because of their eyes and, and a lot of smiling eyes out there in classrooms and schools everywhere. And I've had teachers come up to me and principals come up to me and say universally, I'm so glad we're back. I'm so glad we're back. You know, nobody's, you know, people will send me emails sometimes and sometimes it's not always loving. But I haven't gotten a single email that has said, you know, we don't want to come back. You know, what, what, why are we doing this? People are, people are glad to be back. And, and I think that that's, that's given me a lot of excitement, enthusiasm. I love when I'm getting out to the schools and classrooms. So I, I just, I want to say that, 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 that part has been really enjoyable these last few weeks. The other thing I want to say, and I want to give a lot of gratitude, and, and I'm going to forget, it's like an Academy Award, you know, Academy Award speech, I'm going to forget somebody. But I do want to call out that this is a challenge, you know, to, to do this. Folks have had to hit the ground running. We're moving kids, you know, in various places. We're making sure that everybody is, is vigilantly watched and safeguarded. Making sure that, you know, things are very carefully supervised. The kids are wearing masks. The kids are, you know, keeping, you know, distance, all these kinds of things. And so a lot of people have been a part of that. My, my cabin has been working really, really, really hard. Our, our entire district, district office administration working really, really hard to make that happen. There are a lot of challenges out there. We know we have a teacher shortage. We have a substitute shortage. We have a bus driver shortage. You know, there, there are a lot of challenges that face us and not just us, but districts, you know, across the state, in our region and, and really around the country. So folks have been working really hard and teachers, obviously, coming back into their classrooms, getting things going, getting things started. Spending a lot of time, I see S E L on lots of agendas out there. You know, people are taking the time, the teachers, to make sure that the social, emotional learning needs of kids are met. You know, so they're, they're working really hard. But I really want to give a shout out to our principals. I really want to give a shout out to our principals. Our principals have taken on a lot of public health duties. They just have to because of the, of the circumstances. They do it with, with enthusiasm. They do it without complaint and they do it with thoroughness. And I also want to give thanks to some folks in, in our offices here. Mitch and his crew, Imelda Inos, others who are getting people tested. You know, there's just really been an all hands on deck approach in, in a lot of support. Bus drivers who, who have come in between shifts to assist to say, we will help you do contact tracing. If you have a student that does come to school and, and is ill and, and ultimately test positive, you have to go check around, who was around that student. So you're making the proper notification and that that student is, you know, is, is getting tested. We have bus drivers helping with that process. That's not in their job description, but they're doing it between shifts. So I'm really proud. I'm really proud of, of a lot of hardworking people. And, and so I, I feel that, that we've, we've been able to do a lot of great things, you know, against a lot of odds. The one thing that has been really challenging, you've heard me say it before, and, and I've, I've sent you information on it, is the implementation of, of A B 130. And A B 130 was that big omnibus post, post-budget bill that came to us in July that included in it a mandate that all districts offer virtual academy learning. And that a whole new set of rules on, on a kind of a quasi high-British in independent study program that we've never run before. And in doing it, there were a lot of things that were just not considered. And it's had a lot of unintended consequences. There are a lot of restrictions on the amount of time that you have to devote to it. Who can actually be teaching these? You know, how you can get people in and out. For example, it, a person can request, a family can request to be involved in virtual academy for a medical reason. That's, that's in the law. But the district cannot ask for proof or otherwise question the medical reason. So you can have a lot of people who have concerns about sending their kids back to school, understood. But opt for this program in a way that exceeds what you thought was going to be. And in our case, it has. We've, we have about 10% of our population have opted for this program proportionately. That's the most in this county. But I can also tell you that every other, because I was in a, a room full of district superintendents the other day. And all of us, you know, kind of, you know, airing our frustrations pretty openly, that everybody has had struggles implementing this A B 130, you know, the, the virtual academy. The other thing is that it, it also is, is pretty permissive in allowing people to go back and forth. So if you start in, in a regular classroom, but then, you know, wanting to go to virtual later, or if you start in virtual and you want to go back later. And schools aren't really designed for that. We make assignments of teachers into classrooms and at schools at the beginning of the year with the idea that that's pretty much going to be pretty static, you know, except for the occasional kid that leaves during the school year or moves in or moves out. This allows for a lot of fluctuation that, that is, is, is very hard to follow. And so it's, it's a real struggle being able to get the first, the volunteers, and then to make assignments of teachers to this position. And remember what's different about this than hybrid. Hybrid, the day got shortened on both sides. So the in-person instruction was a shorter day. And then the, the teacher could go do a second, basically a second shift with the students who were at home. This contemplates that there's a full day for the in-person students. And that for the, for the virtual students, that you have the equivalent of a full day in terms of, of activities, assignments, projects and those kinds of things. So it's, it's been, it's been a real challenge. Hats off to Sylvia Whitson, who is our principal over at Independent Study, who left, left school in, in the summer with 150, 160 kids in her assignment and came back to 1,000. And, and so she is scrambling to make that work. I did talk last night, and, and you've probably all seen things coming through. Some of you are still with AXA. Some of you have seen C S B A articles about this. There, there's been an article in EdSource. There's been an article in Cal Matters. Some recent articles is starting to bubble up. People are starting to take this up as an issue that we're asking the legislature, please revisit this. There were a lot of unintended consequences, making this very, very difficult. Particularly during, particularly during a time where we have a teacher shortage and a substitute shortage. We need less restrictions, not more. Last night I was on the phone, I contacted our local legislative, legislative aide for Senator Dodd to explain our issues and express the concerns we have and why this is really difficult to pull off. And there was some talk that he and I had, you know, is this something that could really be accomplished in the next two weeks? Because the legislature is only in session until September 10th, or would this require really convening an extraordinary session, bringing the legislatures back during September to, to deal with this because it's going to take some time. And he couldn't promise me anything because he's not the Speaker of the Assembly. But, but it's on, it's, it's, it's on his radar screen and other, other radar screens. We do have information just in the last few days, because we've had folks working really, really hard on this. Sherri Summers, Heather DePasseo, you know, Mike Santos, Sylvia Whitson, like I, like I just mentioned. And, and Gigi Patrick, you know, has had to pick this up at the negotiating table. Because you know, anytime you're talking about moving people around and dealing with an extra, you know, extra shift that we might ask teachers to take, to have some of these kids in the afternoon. All that is negotiable and is negotiated. Also V E A that's come to the table, ready to help us solve the problem. So lots of people have been a part of, of working on that. We do have some good news. We believe that if we're able to get some of the agreements that we've been talking to V E A about, you know, in terms of, of some limited after-school time to support kids and to be able to run the independent study with a teacher who already has a regular assignment, but with a smaller group of kids. And the number of teachers that we're shaking out of schools that are coming up with low enrollment, mostly because there are kids who have left. That are coming up with low enrollment, mostly because there are kids who have left to go into virtual academy. We believe that we can probably accommodate, uh, the number of kids that we have right now. In T K through eight in the next week or so, but we're, we're starting to line up. Teachers more come every day, more are hired every day, more are identified. At school sites that, that, that we can take out and combine classes and collapse classes every day. So we're definitely going to close the gap and I think we're going to get really close, if not close it entirely. Next week. High school's not been so much of a problem. We had plenty of volunteers to do that. So we're not. As worried about that. All high school students who have requested so far. Um, have gotten into, into this virtual academy. But it's been a struggle. It's been a struggle as you know, and I think we're getting closer, but I do stay worried. And if you have any friends in the legislature, give them a call. Um, because this could continue to be an issue as we progress into the school year. If there are more people asking for this, we may get to a point where, where we can't. Accommodate any further and that's a big concern of mine. So, um. So good news for A B one thirty, a lot of hard work, folks who have been burning the midnight oil, really proud of them. And I think we're getting closer to having this resolved, but it hasn't been easy. It hasn't been easy and this has been the toughest part about starting the school year. Um, so there's that. Um, a couple of more things I just want to bring to you. Uh, construction projects are underway. I've been to a number of school sites. Some of those construction projects continue into the school year, you know, we work to, to, you know, wall those areas off or fence them off. Keep kids safe, you know, keep kids away from the construction or the construction away from the kids. Um, but some of those have bled into the year because number one is very hard. To get your construction projects done between the time the bell rings, the last day of school. And the bell rings the first day of school. And we've, we've run into some real challenges like, you know, much of the rest of the world has. Supply chain shortages, costs of, of materials, shortage of materials. Um, you know, other kinds of issues that have delayed it, but we're, we're driving those projects to try to get them done. Many of the ones that we were hoping to have done by school starting are getting very near to done. And some really beautiful things that are going on on campuses. If you're getting out, seeing your measure S money at work. Um, we've also started having some talks. I think I might've mentioned this before, but if in case I haven't, we're having talks with SCO. And with the Head Start programs, um, on, on a possible early learning center. Here in our school district, you know that we have some surplus properties. We're, we're looking at one in particular that might be a future home. For Head Start programs, for state preschool programs run out of the county. And then throw in a few of our own TK programs there and you have kind of an early learning center. That, that might be a good place for kids to all get started and then be able to progress. You know, through our system, but we can capture them at an early age and they're all in one spot. Not every TK is going to be there. Not every preschool is going to be there, but we can have a place where, where it's really devoted. Um, to early learning, much as our adult school program is devoted to, to that. And one of the programs that we're looking at and, and that they're talking about. Is a, a Head Start Montessori program with the county currently off. I knew, I knew that would make somebody excited. Um, so that's, that's, that's in the talks too. Stay tuned for more information. On that. Um, and finally. Um, I shared with you a little bit, but I wanted to give you a little bit of an update, um, you know, as, as the board is aware. Uh, but I want to kind of update you on this a little bit. Um, we have some challenges with, with, uh, one of our, one of our, uh, charter programs. Um, you know, Griffin Technology and M I T that are really kind of run under the same umbrella. Um, have, have been undergoing some, some fiscal issues and fiscal challenges. That, uh, we're going to probably need to step in on and, uh, be a part of. Uh, you know, kind of finalizing, you know, their fiscal picture, not so much. Through contribution, but determining where they are. Um, and most recently we've, we've run into some complaints, concerns. Um, about their facilities at the M I T campus, at the original M I T campus. Um, the, the condition of their facilities. Um, I was in touch today with the fire chief. Regarding some of what I've been seeing, uh, based on photos that were taken from an inspection team. And the district that went over there the other day, shared, shared those concerns with him. He'll be, be following up. Um, but. There may be more conversations that we'll be having about. What this means for us. Um, and, um. What our, our actions need to be. Um, as the charter authorizer to, to make sure that things are done correctly. And so that, that's. It's using up a good deal of staff time right now, but it's, it's time that, that we need to spend and so we'll be doing that. So those are, those are my comments and report for tonight.
Very, very, uh, helpful. Extensive and very significant to the directions we're going. Thank you so much, Mr. Superintendent. Let me call on Dr. Young. For your board, uh, board's, uh, report. Uh, uh, your, uh, uh, board report, Dr. Young, if you have one. Maybe I'll call on, uh, Trustee Gardner.
Okay, I'll go. Um, this past week or so, I didn't go do any visitations the first week of school because I wanted to. Kind of let things settle in, but, uh, last week I did go out and visited with, uh, Valeo High School. And also with Finney High School, talked with their principals and was, um. Very impressed with what I saw there. Valeo High, that's where I started teaching and. The, the campus is just almost unrecognizable. It looks fabulous. And they have all of these different seating areas for the kids because nobody eats in the cafeteria. And it, it was just, it was great. It was great to see that. It was great to see the kids were out and. About, there was no litter anywhere. So it's like. They, they were really respecting the space that we've provided for them. I was also, um, able to, to see or talk with the principal, um. About the programs that they have on site at Valeo High. They have a. Construction program and a culinary arts program and a great engineering program and. And these programs are, are what the community should know about. And so I'm going to ask a little bit later on. To have presentations so that all of the board can hear about all of the programs. Um. And hopefully the community that, that washboard meetings can also learn a little bit about what's going on at the high schools. I was also pretty, um, excited to, to, to learn more about the, the food program they have there. Uh, the, the pantry that they have for their students and community members and also the. The, the closet, basically the clothing that they can, they'll, they'll have more of that and, and the, the future for their students and, and other community members and. It's, it's a, it's the real deal and it's the whole deal. And I was, I was very impressed and very excited about that. Also was over at, um, Finney and, and talked with, uh, the principal there and. You know, their kids are excited to be back and just the interactions that I, that witnessed between the principal and. The students. I mean, you, you can tell there's a lot of respect there. Um, for Edison, for Dr. Kelly and the, the students were mannerly. They were at lunch and. It, it was just a, it was, of course I'm a high school person, so this was great for me to see. Um, I also, let's see, what else did I do? I went to, um. Uh, yesterday I had a meeting with Advanced Peace. I was on that meeting and, and they talked about where they are in that particular program. And I also had the opportunity to, to watch a video that, um. Dr. Cruz, who's with the Homies Group, it's out of Oakland. It was, to me, it was very impressive and it was. He had everything outlined. I've sent that to, um, Mr. Spalding. And hopefully all of the board can eventually see that going on. It's. He, he originally had planned to have a traditional school in the Oakland school system. Um, but COVID came and kind of upset things, but they have a lot of things going on in the community. With their, their. Underprivileged or kids that are, have been troubled in the past. So. That was interesting to hear and it was interesting to hear the status of Advanced Peace. Um, that program is kind of. We don't know where that is now because of the, the city manager's gone and there are other things that need to be put in place to see what's going to happen. Um, with that program. And then I also met with, uh, Kevin Steele, the, the, the V E A, um, president. That was an interesting conversation and. Um, he's very, very supportive of all of his teachers as we are all of all of our teachers and. We had a, a very good discussion with regards to high expectations that we need to have for all of our students. Uh, our students will rise to those expectations if we have those expectations for them. It's amazing what, what students. Can do if, if they're expected to do that. So we had a good conversation there, had a good conversation about. Um, accountability. So, so that was very. Uh, an interesting conversation, enlightening conversation, I think for the both of us. And I think I'll, I'll continue to meet with him. On a regular basis as, as, um, he wishes. So. That, that is my report. I, I also had other meetings that I will, um, discuss individually with people. But, uh, that is my report and I look forward to getting out and visiting, uh, more schools in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Gardner, for your full report. Outstanding. Uh, Vice President Gross.
Well, I, I was, I was listening, listening to Dr. Gardner. I was there, boy, that, that's a great, she has visited a lot of schools, saw a lot of things. I, I'm just loving it. And, and I think one thing that Christie did mention that's really important is we. There's things out there in our district that we're doing very well. And we don't, we need to keep, we need to quit keeping it a secret. You know, I, I, I haven't gone to school because I, I know. You know, I, the last thing they'd need is me on their school bothering them while they're doing all the things that they have to do and plus. Be, become a public health officer. But I, I do want to say that I was really. Happy to hear the report from our superintendent about. The eventual. Uh, accommodation of our virtual academy. And I, I, and I, and, and another thing, I, I need the community to understand. How hard it is. To basically build another school and that's what virtual academy got about a thousand kids. With no teachers. And, and that's, that's essentially what you're doing. It, we're building a school, one of the largest schools in this district with, with very little labor. So, so I, I, again, I really, I really. Am very pleased with the cooperation of V E A. Uh, pleased with everybody in the district who, who's just running around trying to get this stuff done. And very displeased with the legislature for coming up with another insane idea. That education must have to pass, must have to do with, without any resource or any, any regards of what it is out there and how I get this done. So. Uh, you know, kudos to everybody in the district and, and all other educators across the state of California for trying to do this. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I mean, you know, we just push on and, and we will, we will overcome this. And, and again, thank you. Superintendent Smalling for giving us a, a relative date of completion for this, so we can get all our kids back in school. So the community will, will, will again can rest in peace. And we can go on and educate our kids like we're supposed to. So thank you. And that's my report.
Thank you, Vice President Gross. Uh, Dr. Young, do you have a report?
No, I don't have a report. Uh, my busy week will start next week. I plan to. This year for school, in the school district.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
So, um, I have not, I don't have a, um. Report at this time, but I do have a comment. Um, I want to thank the community for being so supportive. Of us as we made this journey, this transition. This is a big transition. We've never had to do this before. Um, but, um, I'm hearing from several sites that it's been very. Um, not seamless, but it's been not as difficult as it, it could have been. And the parents have been so cooperative. And so, uh, appreciative of anything that they can. I want to thank them. And I want to thank the staff that has, um, that, that reached out and, and embraced them as they came back. Um, I don't know how many, uh, if we are even in the mix of having kids coming back from Afghanistan or not. But if we do, please be. Um. Knowledgeable of how that is and, and that's a new journey for them. So. So. I'll have a long report for you next time.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Uh, on, uh, August the 21st, I. Attended the, uh, fashion show of the Filipino community and I. They, the Filipino leadership there expressed my. Wanted me to make sure that, uh, that, uh, trustee young, I mean. Trustee Gardner and Vice President, uh, Gross were acknowledged because of, they really, really appreciate them being present. And they even asked Superintendent Spalding, they even asked for, um. Assistance Superintendent Mike Santos and why he was missing. But thought I'd let you know, I, you know, I, I'm only a communicator. And then, um, on, uh, eight twenty-four, I participated in the bylaws of C S B A. August twenty-eighth, uh, I. Through the invitation of, uh, Congressman Thompson. Had an opportunity to express our school district's appreciation for the resources. That's being, uh, sent to us, to Speaker Pelosi. And also Senator Padilla. And, um, spoke to them, uh, of our accomplishments that we are making in our school district, the challenges that we were going through. And they were, they acknowledged that, uh, that, uh. That, that if we need further help to let them know because we, they want, that Padilla's commitment is definitely public education. And the speaker made that very clear to me also that, that, uh, that I should talk to, uh, more with, uh, Senator Padilla. And then, uh. My visit with the schools were at Loma Vista. Penny Cook. Hogan. Cave. And I was going to go to Sonoma, but the principal was driving off. In her car. So I decided, decided this is not the time to visit. But I think, uh, I will make this short because the superintendent took my, my report, uh, right, right in the very beginning of his report. That, that things were just so positive. And I started talking to, um. To the teachers, uh, Christie and Tony at the Filipino, uh, event, fashion, uh, event. There were quite a few Filipino teachers there from Jesse Bethel in particular. And because I wasn't going to talk to any of them the first week, right? And they were just so positive. They said, well, tell me about the students. So the kids seemed so happy that they're at school. You know, and the behavior, they said, was the very first thing. That made them recognize that this is, they have different students. Than the kids that they had a year and a half ago. And so that was my first clue. That, that evening. And then when I visited, um. Loma Vista and Penny Cook, um. I couldn't talk to the principals still till later on with, with, I came back to get, to Penny Cook. Uh, because they were taking care of the kids. They were doing mental health care. For the kids. And so that's why I came back to Penny Cook. Hogan is, uh. Just. One of the things that I've noticed that. I think good principals tend to keep good teachers. I don't know, maybe that, that is, uh, you know, that is being, uh, what do you call it? Too general. Uh, but, but they, the, the, the teachers that I, I will not mention because it's not fair. Uh, that they tend to keep people. Because they, they love working for them. And, and so the, these particular two schools did not have much, um, need for. For, um, classroom help because they have a, they had a. And so, um. So that was my perception, um. Uh, let me see. They were happy. They were. Uh. They did not help, uh, they did not ask for any particular help. Uh, they were doing a job. Uh, I, I appreciate the. Uh, the, uh, lobbying of the various, uh, educational institutions. Toward the legislation, um, with some A B one thirty, uh, Superintendent Spalding. Yeah, I, I too had, uh.
Yes, A B one thirty.
Yeah, I, I too had, had the opportunity to, uh, to lobby because the S B A wanted the trustees. To, uh, to send word to the, our legislators and they even pointed out who, you know, all we have to do was click on the. On this little, uh, blue, part, part of the, the report and, and immediately went to my legislators. So they, they know that particular, I was going to give it to, to all of you. Maybe I'll just. Maybe I'll just, I'll just do that. That way you, you can click and, and go directly to, to, uh, to Dodd and to, uh, I forgot the other gentleman's name. Uh, so, so, uh, every, I feel that, that the sites are pleased and happy and, and challenged at the same time. And, and, uh, we will, it seems like we're heading toward a positive, uh, school year. And thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for your outstanding job in making that possible in support of your teachers. Uh, I think that's all for my report. I'm ready to report on the four pillars that you want from me, but I will not, I'll discuss that later. Any, anything else? What a good if the order? Are there any community input, um, Ms. Thomas?
No, sorry, not at this time.
Thank you. Announcement of upcoming meetings?
The next meeting.
Dr. Baldi, I think I, I think I see Dr. Young's hand up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't.
Sorry. I, yeah, I think she's in.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Young. Please speak.
Um, I also would like to mention, um, that, um, we had a, we need to be vigilant of the possible students that we might be receiving from, um, Louisiana, the Gulf Coast, along that area. Um, there, there's so many people that have been misplaced and they might have relatives that are in California and they probably might send, I, I know that they probably will send their kids to the nearest relative. And sometime it is in California. So we need to be mindful of that, that they will, they probably will be coming without records. So, um, we need to deal with, be mindful of dealing with that, uh, in Student Support Services. Uh, because we had to deal with that with Katrina. And, um, we made sure that those kids had a safe place because they had just totally lost everything. So please be mindful of that.
Thanks to Dr. Young for that, uh, counsel. That's a very important. Anything else? Uh, we will be meeting your 15th, if I'm correct? Are there any future board agenda items you wish to bring up? Uh, oh, okay. Dr. Christie Gardner, please.
Um, yeah, I actually would like to, and I would like to have this kind of almost a regular thing um, for the board to hear presentations from the, the high school, um, principals and also the middle school principal. We hear a lot, last year anyway, we heard a lot from the elementary. We had a lot of presentations from the elementary students. Um, I'd like to hear what the principal has to say about the programs that they offer their students and the participation. So I'd really like to hear from the secondary principals. If, if each could do just some type of a presentation um, for the board with regards to the programs that they have to offer the, the, the community, not just their students, but the, the community.
Thank you, uh, Trustee Gardner. Uh, Dr. Young?
I would also, thinking back, you know, what, um, um, Trustee Gardner said, I would also like the, the programs to be, um, showcased.
Okay.
You know, that's a, that's a good, that's a good advertising. That's a good, you know, thing for the, for the community to know that we have these things functioning. They're actually functioning and have the people that are functioning in it showcase it. Uh, that's a, a great opportunity to, you know, put our name out there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, picking back off, uh, Trustee Gardner also, uh, when I visited with the principal at Vallejo High, he, he was so high on the trades, also the opportunity for the trades and please, uh, have that opportu, report to also when, when opportunity comes. Anything else? It is 7:15. That means it takes another 45 minutes for superintendent to be home. He won't be home till eight o'clock. So with that in mind, I'm calling them, meeting adjourned.